Can everybody please check in before we start the meeting, please? Commissioner Olson, I need you to check in. You know Sean Fredrickson. Alright, I will bring the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting to order for Wednesday, September 9th, 2020. Can we please have a roll call, please? We have nine present, one presiding, and two absent. Please let the record reflect Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Fredrickson are excused.
Oh, John, I'm here.
Oh, Commissioner Anderson is here, so...
I'm just having internet trouble.
Okay, we have ten present, one presiding, and one absent. Commissioner Fredrickson is excused. Commissioner McDonough, would you please lead us in the prayer? Commissioner McDonough, it looks like you're having some internet issues. I'll continue. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen. Next item on tonight's agenda is the public comment on any items that are on the agenda. We'll open up the phone lines and see if there's anybody there. I do have a letter to read into the record. Yes, there doesn't appear to be anybody on the phone right now, so I'll continue reading the letter that we've received. This letter is from Nordee Tretheway, 3448 Wharton Street, Butte, Montana. Comments on the MOU, Communication 2020-360. The Restore Our Creek Coalition, ROCC, is very encouraged by recent developments that have created a memorandum of understanding, MOU between Butte Silver Bow and the state of Montana. As a coalition, ROCC has strongly supported an MOU to supplement what is in the consent decree about Silver Bow Creek. When we, when we and so many others called for an MOU, it was to have an agreement in place that will keep the gate open for the prospect of eventually restored Silver Bow Creek. The MOU before you opens that gate between the CD and the future success of eventually getting a fully restored first mile of Silver Bow Creek in place. For better than five years, our community has firmly made the point that our first mile of Silver Bow Creek is just as important as all the miles restored west of Butte and all the way to Milltown. People of Butte cannot and will not forget the first mile. The partnership between the state and Butte Silver Bow and this MOU provides us all with a better opportunity to achieve that important community goal. Several years ago, ROCC and the community developed a plan for the Silver Bow Creek corridor in the center of our town. It includes removal of the tailings along the corridor, parrot gardens east, north side, the addition of community-enhancing amenities, and ultimately, the actual restoration of upper Silver Bow Creek, lost to more than a century of mining and smelting devastation. Agreements in the consent decree, the CD, bring the tailings removal and community amenities into the corridor ever closer. While the CD doesn't do enough directly for Silver Bow Creek restoration, it does contain language that holds an opportunity to keep the upper reaches of the restored Silver Bow Creek in our crosshairs so that, working together, we might get this important restoration done, and the MOU is critical to that. Unlike the tailings and amenities, there is still not a, you're still not a yet clear-cut plan that outlines how we can continue towards a restored Silver Bow Creek. However, with the MOU, we have an opportunity to get a plan in place among the parties at some point. The MOU between the local government and the state is an important vehicle that ROCC's wanted as that next step. To see that gate is in place to help us all cross over the consent decree to eventually of a restored Silver Bow Creek. In summary, ROCC very much supports the memorandum of understanding between Butte Silver Bow and the state of Montana as it pertains to constructing a line creek that leads towards something much greater, a future restored creek in the center reaches of Butte, Montana. We anticipate testifying in favor of that before the committee of the whole tomorrow and look forward to the council approving the MOU and authorizing the chief executive to sign on behalf of Butte Silver Bow. And sincerely, Nordee Tretheway, Restore Our Creek Coalition spokesperson. It looks like we do have a call on the line, so we will go to that right now. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Nordee Tretheway, and I reside at 3448 Wharton Street in Butte, Montana.
Good evening.
I am... Good evening, how are you doing tonight?
Doing okay.
Great. Hey, I'm speaking on behalf of Restore Our Creek Coalition, and as you know, I spoke during the comments section last evening to the council regarding the MOU between Butte Silver Bow and the state of Montana, item four, Communication 2020-360. I submitted my comments to the council in writing and will not repeat all of my comments except to emphasize how important it is to have a gateway between the CD and a future restored Silver Bow Creek in the center or heart of Butte. The MOU serves as that gateway for a number of opportunities, but not only opens the gateway for a future creek, but also serves as a gateway to gain access to funds that have heretofore been unavailable to Butte. Rock is strongly and firmly in support of having Butte Silver Bow's chief executive sign the MOU with the state of Montana to open the critical gateway for Butte's future. And Rock, excuse me, Rock thanks Butte Silver Bow and the state of Montana for taking the initiative to form the MOU and open that gate. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Nordee. Looks like we have another one. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Evan Barrett. I live at 807 West Silver in downtown Butte, and I wanted to speak briefly to the committee of the whole on Communication 2020-360, which is a letter from Governor Bullock, requesting the council approve the MOU between Butte Silver Bow and the state and authorize Chief Executive Dave Palmer to sign on behalf of Butte Silver Bow. On May 6th, in public testimony on the consent decree, I testified in favor of the consent decree, but also asked for the development of a memorandum of understanding, an MOU. Many others also made that same request. The MOU was and is needed because the CD itself did not do enough for the restoration of Silver Bow Creek, primarily because of the resistance of ARCO. An MOU without ARCO in it could help ensure future joint action by the two levels of government, local and state. I'd like to take a second and quote some of my language from that May 6th hearing, and I said, quote, "I suggest that we approach the ARCO impediment issue outside of the CD. We should sit down right now and craft a memorandum of understanding or a letter of intent that lays out a plan to get us all to..." ...over time. At minimum, that MOU should be negotiated and signed by Butte Silver Bow and the state of Montana. The state and the local government are positioned to help craft a plan that assures the citizens of Butte that creek restoration will happen, that someone will be keeping an eye out to see that it is proceeding. So if ARCO wants their impediment language to stay in the CD, we need to use a vehicle like this to see that a restored Silver Bow Creek is in our future, to ensure that the state and county are committed to such action, something that is not in the CD itself. Let me reiterate how important an outside-of-the-CD MOU is to ensuring that the council can achieve its goal, its dual goal, of signing the consent decree and advancing the restoration of Silver Bow Creek. This MOU would result in committed action by the state and Butte Silver Bow in restoring the creek while still adhering to the CD itself. It is a way we can help achieve both. And let me suggest again that we expeditiously pursue such a vehicle. It would represent a commitment of the MOU parties, Butte and the state, to act together outside of the CD to keep the possibility of a creek moving forward for Butte's future while maintaining consistency with the CD. Let's take needed action now to make sure a restored creek is of Butte Silver Bow's future." That's the end of the quote of what I mentioned to you on the record back in May. Today, that MOU is before you as a committee of the whole. I urge you to approve it and to authorize the chief executive's signature. And finally, I want to thank Chief Executive Dave Palmer and his staff, particularly John Sasso, and also Governor Steve Bullock and his staff, especially Patrick Holmes, for working so hard to pull this important agreement together. In particular, kudos to the governor, who more than five years ago kicked off the efforts that brought us to this point by having the state take on the removal of the parrot tailings, an item that started the ball rolling after so many years of inaction, and for bringing this MOU forward for your consideration. So I urge your approval of the letter and your authorizing of the chief executive to sign on behalf of Butte Silver Bow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Right now, there doesn't appear to be anybody on the phone, but I'll give it a couple seconds just to make sure. Okay, there doesn't appear to be anybody else on the phone line. I'm going to move right into Section 1, which is bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. Number one is Communication Number 2020-358. Maria Portravina, Executive Secretary Tibid, requesting Council of Commissioners concurrence for a presentation of a work plan and budget for the fiscal year 2021 for the Butte Silver Bow Tourism Business Improvement District Tibid on September 9th, 2020, and a public hearing on September 23rd, 2020, and a resolution to keep the Tibid assessment at $1 per occupied guest room. Being that this is just a presentation, I don't need to ask for publication yet, but I will go to Maria Portravina to give her presentation.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
I'm hoping. Again, my name is Maria Portravina. I reside at 2511 Parrot Street here in Butte with my handsome husband, Mike, who's sitting over here. And so, thank you for allowing me to give this presentation, and I'm not so sure. So can you see my screen, or did I have to do something, Nate?
Hi, Maria, you have to share your presentation.
Okay, let me look. Join participants chat, more options, record, share. Okay, and there it would be, maybe? Oh, can you see it now?
Yes, we can, yes.
Oh, alright. So we know how this goes, right? I get lost in the screens when I'm going through. So this is the work plan for the Butte Silver Bow Tourism Improvement. So here we go. As always, every year, I give you a little bit of background on the organizations and what it is that we accomplish. So there's two funding sources for tourism promotion in most communities, and Butte being one of them. One of them is the Convention of Visitors Bureau, or the CVB. That is the bid tax that hoteliers collect throughout the state of Montana. It's currently at 8%. 4% goes back to the state of Montana. The other 4%, which I'm more concerned with, is for state for promotion for our non-resident visitors primarily. Traditionally, we collect, or our part of the budget is about, you know, $100, $125,000. This year, I am anticipating, and the fiscal year that this is for would be starting July 1 of this year, running through June 30 of 2021, is down, I'm estimating it to be, and again, it's an estimation because the money has not been collected, is $75,000. So it's a significant decrease. The next thing, and the reason why I'm here this evening with you, is the TBID, which is the $1 per occupied guest room per night. In the past, I have given you numbers that have been $100,000 higher, right around $250, and I believe last year it came in at like $261 or something like that. But I'm figuring this year that $150,000 would be a good number to deal with. So, just a little bit of a reminder, and I think I went back, I was late getting on your call last night, and I had some phone calls about, and some text messages that you were discussing this a little bit last night, and so I went back and I listened to some of your comments. Let's just remember that regardless of the funds, that it is to be done for promotion marketing and the support thereof. It cannot be spent on brick-and-mortar projects. And TBID and CVB funds are to fund projects where it is to increase hotel occupancy, or if it's not hotel occupancy, that the rate that hoteliers are able to charge for their rooms will be higher because of an event that is funded through TBID and/or CVB. The basics, yeah, CVB funds, and the way how this is figured is through the governor's appointed tourism advisory council, but we go through a strategic planning process. We have brand standards of which we need to adhere to, but we are primarily targeting the non-resident visitor. Of course, there's always going to be, as through this, or through this presentation, I'm going to talk a bit about COVID, and I'm not going to go into great detail, but I will refer to it. In this case, this year, we are spending more money targeting the Montana visitor to come to our different areas, or at least those in regions or areas that have propensity to come to Butte that are ideally not hotspots with COVID. But in the past, it has been toward the non-resident visitor, whereas now, we're a little bit more open with how we're spending it. Again, a marketing plan is presented and has to be approved by the Tourism Advisory Council. There's some, there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through. At the end of every fiscal year, I have compliance and completion reporting. I go through an annual audit with a compliance specialist out of the Department of Commerce, and then also, she goes through a legislative audit. So it's audited extensively to make sure that all of our funds are spent appropriately. I'll make a notation here that one year, we wrote a check for seven cents in order to balance our budget. I'm suffering from a cold, not COVID, but I have to have a hot drink, and it's just hot tea, I assure you. Okay. TBID funding, the basics. Again, it is to increase lodging occupancy or increase our average daily rate. We try, in most years, to go ahead and fund events that are September through May. We assist new events in obtaining their footing while helping other events with promotional dollars. So when we've looked at events in the past that we have funded, we, when the Montana Folk Festival is happening, we have continued to give funding dollars to them. We have assisted at different times with Henri-Raw, so we've continued to fund some events that have continued through the years, but ideally, the premise was new events. Again, I go back to brick-and-mortar projects. For TBIDs, and I will make notations as I go through, but grant applications are submitted for funding requests. And we have two funding cycles. One award cycle is in February, and the other one is in July. I'll make a note here that at this point, we actually only had one request come forward during the time period that expired on June 30th, and we're holding on to that one because it's, you know, still somewhat COVID-related. And our board of directors is hoteliers. And so, in the case of Fairmont Hot Springs, the hotel owner is in Canada, but her designee is Steve Lubek, who is the general manager. So these are people who are knowledgeable of who their guests are. They are active. We have a seven-member board, and this board is appointed by the chief executive, and then, I think subsequently, the council commissioners approves who's on our board. I can tell you quickly that our board consists of Steve Lubek from Fairmont, I don't have them written down, so let's hope I remember, Rick Leipheimer from the Copper King, Desiree Shogren representing the Canali family at the Comfort Inn, J.J. Adams from the Hotel Finland, Ted Ackerman from the Miners Hotel, Mike Johnson from the Hampton Inn, and Kami Johnson representing the Guest Western Plus Butte Plaza Inn. We have seven market segments that we put money into, and this pertains more to this year, although these numbers will not add up to $150,000. I'm talking about like when I get to special projects. So, we have market segments for administration, reserves, special projects, festivals, events, tournaments, groups of meetings, and leisure, and those are the pockets that we put money into, and I will go into a little bit more detail as I go down. Our collection period is October 1 through September 30th. I send the forms out to the hoteliers, they complete them, they do not send them back to me, they are directed to be sent right back up to the assessor's office, so I do not see them. That is proprietary information as far as I'm concerned. The assessor's office adds them on to the November property taxes. I stay in touch with the assessor's office, and when funds are paid, I can then request, and I get checks January or February, depending upon the amount. If there's a significant amount earlier, I will ask for it, so we're not just piecemealing checks. So administrative, as much as I love what I do, and I love tourism, and I love hotels, I don't do it for free. So this goes ahead, and this helps to assist what the CVB contributes to my salary. In the case of the CVB, only 20% of our revenue for a year can be put toward salaries or administration. So this year, based on $75,000, I'm looking at about $15,000. The TBID picks up the remainder. Voices of Montana Tourism is an organization that is not a lobbying organization, but they are out there to discuss and to share the importance of tourism as an economic driver in the state. We have the accounting services, we go through Newland and Company, and they do an overview of our expenditures, and then any office expenses that we may incur. So again, my salary, they contribute $45,000 toward that, and then Voices for Tourism. Tournaments. So there's been a bit of a change here, but it's always based on grant applications. So in the past, we have assisted the Butte Civic Center when they go to bid for tournaments through the Montana High School Association, so we, Billy writes us, Bill Melvin writes a grant application for the events that he is going after, and we help offset those costs. We've also funded individual events, such as a taekwondo tournament, or, I'm trying to think of some, well, we've done things with Butte Central the last couple of years, like the Laverne Combo softball tournament, of course, that didn't happen this last year. But there are outside events that we do assist with. And then, something that we did this year that was new, the council has been generous with Advantage Butte in awarding them dollars through the Economic Mill, and it was decided that what the TBID would do is that they would take whatever the Economic Mill was awarded to Advantage Butte and double that, not to exceed $25,000. So we are assisting Advantage Butte with their funding as well. So, we are fortunate this year to have a lot of events at the Civic Center if COVID, if COVID doesn't take over. We have three events, February and March. We have, I think the Super Divisional is going to be here, we have, I believe it's a State A, and then maybe a Western A. We have three tournaments at the Civic Center, and then Advantage Butte. And then I will anticipate, if COVID doesn't take over again, some TBID applications to be coming forth, and so those amounts will depend upon the request and how the board feels, that, at what level they can go ahead and they can fund. Groups and meetings is another one with COVID that has really taken a hit with our hotels, but there still is an opportunity for us to spend money within this market segment. So if the city itself, if we were to get together and there was a group of us that wanted to go bid for a conference, or if a hotel wanted to go bid for a conference and needed assistance financially, we would assist them with that. Naturally, it's all about occupied guest rooms, so we always want to encourage different attendees to go ahead and come early or stay late, so we will help with the promotion of those. There are times when a conference will come to Butte, and sometimes it's a matter of a make or break, and we will assist with transportation costs. But with those transportation costs have to do with is, let's say there's a conference at the Copper King, and they're going to be doing an event up at the Royal Museum of Mining, we will help offset that transportation cost with that for transportation. If there's a way to increase the attendance of a conference, we naturally will assist with that. And then, any trade shows where we can, we can increase Butte's exposure to new meeting markets. So I'd like to see that we're going to be doing a lot of this, because it's not necessarily for the conferences in 2021, but in the conferences in '22, '23, and et cetera. So we've allocated $20,000 in this particular group, and of course, we can go ahead and slide those monies back and forth. Leisure is that, you know, when you're taking the vacation with your family, or, you know, the girls' trip, or the guys going golfing, or whatever it is. And so, currently, we partner with the Butte CVB. We do a very large digital and online campaign looking for that market. There also could be signage that would be a part of this. A good example of this would be is if we, any billboard changes, such as the one out at Williamsburg that I'm working on, any maps, such as the maps that are put out for all of the outdoor recreation in this area, and any additional printed materials that would be needed to keep visitors in our area a little longer. Festivals, I spoke about a little bit early, and again, COVID comes back into play, but any of those events that happens over a specific number of days, and again, this is based on a grant application, and $23,000, you know, I would hope that the Montana Folk Festival, I don't know if the Kovalite International Film Festival will come forward, Snopflinga, maybe that's going to be a possibility, I'm not sure, but that's what these funds are earmarked for. Special Projects is a new market segment that the board came up with a while back, and this is where, and I have a typo in here, where it says currently the TBID has set aside over, we have set aside $200,000 as a one-to-one match to gain another flight into the Butte Airport, and these dollars were earmarked for a revenue guarantee. I'm not so sure where we are at, and again, I make reference of COVID because we don't know exactly what is happening and where we are going to be with regard to adding another flight, and I don't have information on that. I would refer you back to the airport authority to visit with, with their ad on that particular endeavor, but we will continue, as far as I know, to hold this money, and possibly, maybe, I can't say, but maybe add to this pot. It just depends upon what the future holds. And it's always good to have just a little bit of money in reserve, and what this does is, should we fall a little short, such as if there are a lot of tournaments that come forth, and we need to fund those, and we need to take money out of another category, this would be the category, this is what this is reserved for, the board does try to always keep $25,000 set aside, and so that is where that particular fund sits at. I've tried to keep this brief over the years. It's probably easier, I can't see Johnny Morgan, and unfortunately, John is going to be, I guess, no longer on the council, but hopefully, he's still awake, as we're just now to Slide 18, which is where I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Maria. I've been very attentive the whole time, so thank you.
I knew you would be.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? I guess I better get to the spot where I can see everybody.
Yeah, I want to get back to that, but I'm kind of like, can I just X out of this, Nate, or?
There we go.
Oh, there we go, something happened. Okay, there you are, okay.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions for Maria? No questions. Maria, I'll ask my normal question, and I know you might be anticipating it, but with the dollar for Tibid, in the past, it's been stated that if an organization or a group such as the Council of Commissioners would like to raise that over a dollar, it was explained that come up with a project and present it to the Tibid Board, and I just want to see if that's still the case.
That is the case, but keep in mind, and I've tried to make this pretty clear during this presentation, is that the premise behind it is to increase hotel occupancy. Now, when you increase hotel occupancy, you know, everyone else benefits as well, your restaurants, your retail, your gas stations, your bars and your taverns, and, you know, your attractions, our trails get more use, et cetera. But keep in mind, it's not for brick-and-mortar, it is for promotion, and it is for hoteliers to go ahead, you know, they collect it, and I do want to make a comment with regard to the increase. I took an informal poll before COVID of my hoteliers, and it'll be a formal poll that'll go out, it'll be sent certified mail, as I will be working to extend the life of the TBID another 10 years. It will sunset in June, so we'll be looking for another 10 years. In this informal poll, I got responses, and it was about 100%. I can't even say that maybe 50% of my hotels responded. But out of 19 properties that collect the TBID, they all were for extending it, the ones that responded. But there were hotels that didn't want to see an increase. And what surprised me is there were hoteliers that have facilities in other communities where more than $1 is collected. So there were a couple of them, several of them, eight of them actually, that indicated that they weren't for an increase. If there was an increase, they wanted to know what for. So it's something that, again, I can't remember when I was listening last night, I think it was Commissioner Fisher who said that, you know, I've been sort of saying the same thing for several years. It needs to come from the hoteliers, or there needs to be a plan brought forward. It's not a good thing to tax just because you can, but it needs to be very thoughtful. And again, I'll reiterate that my Board of Trustees are hoteliers. They're in the trenches. They know what their customers are saying. I haven't, it's been many years since I had been in a hotel and heard the guests visit about a tax or even a TBID assessment, because it was pretty new when I was back in the hotel, then I took this position. But they hear what their guests are saying, and I trust their judgment, is what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. On the question, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Maria. It's always nice to see your face, and sorry we couldn't meet like we usually do. I don't get to see how nicely dressed you are, you're so dressed up nice for this meeting, but please tell me where it ends. Anyway, without a crystal ball, I know that this COVID has just been an incredible challenge for everybody. But do you have any idea what the shortfall might be for the hotel, you know, for the collections that you will be making, that you need for all the things you just explained to us?
Well, I feel confident, you know, we'll be okay funding the things that we have already approved. We approved $102,000 for the Civic Center events that are Montana High School Association related, if those events take place. We could, we can move some money around if we need to. I wouldn't be presenting a budget or a work plan that I didn't think that we wouldn't have the funds to back up. I'm not concerned about that. I am concerned about my hoteliers. I think that, you know, if you've read the paper, and Mike Smith called me, and then John Amy did a quick interview, they're down. I mean, you know, it's COVID, and some hotels are doing okay. Those corporate hotels that, you know, the Hampton, the Holiday Inn Express, the Best Western, they have a bit of that corporate business that keeps them going. They've had a relatively good summer. But when I ask them, you know, when I call, and I'll say, "How's it going?" "Oh, you know, it's good." And then I say, "Compared to last year?" "Oh, we're down." You know? I think about Fairmont Hot Springs when this happened, and I was talking to Steve Lubick. When this happened, and they closed their pool, they were down to one room. And it was, I believe she was a traveling nurse, and she was over in a condo. They closed their restaurant, they laid everybody off. When the pool was able to reopen, they got business back, but, you know, which is great, and they still have that, and they'll be able to keep going with that through the fall and the winter, because that's important. But that conference business is their bread and butter, and if we can't have conferences, and I'm not saying that anything, any restrictions or whatever, I fully believe that, we're in quarantine right now. So, you know, we understand COVID completely, but, you know, the Copper King depends upon that group business. We're going to struggle, we're going to struggle for a while. Going back to the airlines, I think we all know that that's going to be a while before we see any increases, when you're looking at the layoffs that American Airlines and United and across the border are doing. So it's going to take us a bit. But we will come out of it, and, you know, God willing, this will be a down year on our numbers. I know when we, when anyone looks at budgets, especially when I was in the hotel, and you have a bad year, and, hey, the next year, if it's better, you look like a rock star. So this was the year that is going to be the baseline to where everyone hopefully will look like rock stars next year.
Thanks, Maria. Thanks for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Question, Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maria, thank you for coming before us tonight. You know, it's been a weird time for all of us. It's whatever thought would be watching to other on a screen. See, my question is just kind of about the reserves. You know, you're saying you always keep a $25,000 reserve, you know, just in case. What would be, you know, what would be the need for that $25,000? You know, why would you ever have to dip into that, in your mind?
Well, there's times we dip into, where the board will decide to fund, so for instance, let's just go to when I was mentioning, or if you look at your presentation, and if you look at tournaments. $102,000 to the Civic Center, $25,000 to Advantage Butte, and then, you know, those grant applications to be determined. We know, or they know, I should say, because I don't vote, they know they have that reserve, so then they can take that money and shuffle it over. And they do that at times, where we over, will not overspend, but we know it's important, and that money is there. So there's many times we take those reserves down, and then when a collection comes in again, we bump them back up. But ideally, at this time of the year, this is when we say, when we're looking at our budgets, we're going to keep it at $25,000. So let me tell you, we're swapping money in order to be able to truly fund as many events that put heads in beds as we possibly can.
Sounds good, Maria. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Maria. I guess the next step, there will be a public hearing on September 23, and then after that, a resolution will be drafted, I believe. So until the 23rd, I guess there's nothing else, right?
Nope. Not somebody has any questions. And on the backside of my presentation is my email address, which I'm working from home. I get my email on my phone, and then if you want it, I don't know if I put my cell phone number up there, but if you want that, it's 491-5350. It's best if you shoot me a text message first that you need to talk to me.
All right. Thank you, Maria, for the presentation, and thanks for everything.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. I'll move on to Section 2, which is Communications. Number 1, Communication 2020-3 through 5. Eric Kessler, Superfund Operations Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners for a bid opening on September 2, 2020, for the topsoil that is required for the ongoing operations at the maintenance of the reclaimed areas. We did hold this bid opening, so Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I move to place Communication 2020-335 on file.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Fisher. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Can we please record the vote? It's like we have 11 yea and 0 nay, so motion passes. Number 2, Communication 2020-353. Cindy Beck, 122 Minus Street, Butte, Montana, requesting Council of Commissioners consideration to purchase Little Minus Load, lots 5 and 6, SCC Township 3 North, Range 8 West. When our home at 122 Minus Street, and have lived there for 11 years, or we own our home, we would like to purchase these lots for additional parking and possibly a garage. We did refer that to land sales, so we will await their response coming back. Number 3, Communication 2020-357. Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Analyst, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a public hearing for September 16, 2020, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2020-21 budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. We will continue to hold that in abeyance pending the 16th date. Number 4, Communication 2020-360. Steve Bullock, Governor, requesting Council of Commissioners concurrence and authorization for the Chief Executive to sign the Draft Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the State of Montana and Butte Silver Bow on restoration projects in the Silver Bow Creek Corridor. Mr. Chief Executive, I don't know if you have anything to update us on, or if I should go to Mr. Holmes?
No, I think this is a great deal for Butte Silver Bow to have this MOU in place, but I'll let Patrick Holmes from the Governor's Office speak now. Patrick, it's all right.
Patrick, welcome. You're on mute, Patrick.
Good morning, or good evening, Chairman Morgan, members of the council. Thanks for having me here. I'm Patrick Holmes, I'm Governor Bullock's Natural Resources Policy Advisor, and I'm pleased to be here to just share briefly some background on the correspondence you received from Governor Bullock in this draft MOU that is before you for your review and consideration. From the state's perspective, this MOU provides an important framework for Butte Silver Bow and the State of Montana to work together to cooperatively engage the public around restoration actions in Upper Silver Bow and Blacktail Creeks. It was developed, as you heard earlier, to be responsive to the public input that you all received as part of your deliberations of the proposed consent decree. Specifically, this draft MOU affirmatively states our intent to integrate wherever possible the community's vision for restoration with our remedial design efforts moving forward. And the agreement also affirms the state's commitment of $1 million of settlement proceeds should the CD be finalized following our work at Blacktail Creek, to support the furtherance of the proposed Line Creek, and other priorities that may be identified by the community, such as riparian restoration efforts, trail improvements to adjoining neighborhoods, and other efforts. Lastly, this agreement outlines plans to pursue other public and private funding sources to support restoration investments in the community, be they through federal funding programs, other programs managed by the state or private sector and philanthropic partners. It's, the agreement is delivered to you in draft, and we respectfully defer to you for your process for its consideration, but we certainly think it's a good opportunity and responsive to the input you received. On behalf of myself and the governor, I want to extend my thanks to Chief Executive Palmer and John Sesso and their staff and team for their support and work on this effort. And with that, I'll yield back to you, Mr. Chair, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? I don't know if Mr. Sesso has anything to add, but doesn't look like it. Mr. Sesso, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, John Sesso, Superfund Coordinator. We produced this MOU with the governor and the governor's staff in response to the request that we received from the public. We considered a very important step in the process of moving forward towards a complete remedy and restoration of all of our sites in Butte, especially the Silver Bow Creek Corridor. We believe that the consent decree includes a number of significant land use improvements in the corridor, the Silver Bow Creek Conservation Area in particular, and all the amenities that are outlined in the CD. But this also affirms the state's commitment to provide some seed money for some of the other amenities, including the Line Creek, that were also requested by the public to get as many of our goals achieved as possible over the next several years. So, you know, the public asked for this. You essentially directed us to try to get this done, and with many thanks to Patrick and the governor and Chief Executive for telling us to get it done. We have it here in front of you, and I think it comes with our recommendation to you to approve it and the chief executive's signature going forward, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sesso. Does any of the commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you, John Sesso. I have no objections to the MOU set forth by Governor Bullock. I do have a few comments and maybe a few questions at the end. One of the comments that I have is the CD has not been signed by Judge Haddon, and as we all know, we are going to have a new governor, for sure. And there's a good choice, or a possible chance, we may have a new chief executive in Butte Silver Bow. So we're within 90 days of having this election. I'm wondering, why are we wanting to sign this now when we have possibly two or three new players coming in? And as you know, Doug Benevento sent out an email recently that he's restructuring the Denver office in hope of getting a little better cleanup for mine waste in the west. I guess my question is, without the CD being signed, are we putting the cart ahead of the horse here? Or is this something that we think we need to do because of the transition that may take place in the near future?
Who would like to answer that question?
I'll respond first. Perhaps Patrick can chime in, but, you know, the Governor Bullock made this commitment of the $1 million as seed money to the Line Creek concept, as it complements all the other land use improvements in the CD. Chief Executive Palmer made this commitment to respond to the requests from Restore Creek and other interested parties here in Butte. It's being done now because those parties, the governor and the chief executive, want to affirm that commitment going forward, so that even in the instance of any transition, that the Memorandum of Understanding stays in place. You are correct in the fact that if there's no consent decree, then there's no reason for an MOU, but that takes care of itself with respect to the recitals, and if there's no consent decree, then, you know, then the MOU has really very little meaning. We expect the consent decree to be at least entered with the court in the coming days. The Department of Justice has responded to all the comments received by July 15. Those comments will be submitted, and we'll have an answer from the judge very soon. But we felt that, again, in response to the requests from the public and members of the council, that we should get this done, and we think it's appropriate for it to be considered by you now, to whatever extent you want to delay it is your business.
Patrick, I don't know if you...
Thank you, Chairman. I would just add that I believe, you know, this proposed MOU, it offers a framework of moving forward for coordination, for consultation, for public engagement, for working on our best approaches to integrate restoration with remedial design actions at the site. And, you know, our view is it's responsive to a broad set of concerns and issues that have been raised by the community, and that any future governor of the state would have an interest in maintaining that type of framework for coordination and communication, irrespective of what their other priorities may be. So it's our hope that this does provide that long-term framework, and that independent of the outcomes in November, it's a value fair.
Thank you. Mr. Chief Executive?
Yeah, I would just like to add also that, you know, when the Restore Creek personnel came to my office and asked me to get some seed money going for this project into the future, and it wasn't just knocking on the governor's door and saying, "Hey, how about $1 million?" It was a lot of hard work and time-consuming efforts on all parties to get this to happen. And I'm committed to keep my word, and that's why I'd asked for this MOU to be...
And I'm committed to keep my word, and that's why I'd ask for this MOU to be put in place to, uh, memorialize the agreement that we have in case there is a new change in government. I'd like to ask Commissioner Fisher how good of a chance there is for a new chief executive. That's beside the point. Whoever the administration is at the time, I think this MOU is going to help memorialize that commitment on the state's behalf and Butte Silver Bow's, uh, commitment to work with all of the citizens of Butte Silver Bow to see the vision, um, come to fruition.
Follow up, Commissioner Fisher, then Commissioner Shaw. You're on mute, Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher, you're on mute. There you go.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, gentlemen, for your response. I guess it goes back to the, uh, you know, uh, I know it's, you can't re undo this or anything, but it goes back to why didn't we, uh, do the first mile of the creek to start with? It's not in the CD. I'm not going to go there. But I guess my point is, um, apparently, one million dollars is not near enough to do any of the work that needs to be done. But if that's the amount of money we're going to get, as I said, I have no objection to any of the MOU. It's probably a good idea. I just have some questions. One of the questions I do have to end my, uh, my little rant here is, under legal compliance, A, responsibilities of the parties of states, the state and Butte Silver Bow and their respective agencies and offices will handle their own activities and utilize their own resources, including the expenditure of their own funds in pursuing the state-stated objectives of this MOU. Each party will carry out separate activities in a coordinated and mutually beneficial manner. Can you kind of explain to me what that means about Butte Silver Bow is going to have to use their own resources and funding uh, to pursue what's stated in this MOU? I mean, what happens if we come and, you know, the, my understanding is we had twenty million dollars to reroute the creek around the south side of the Black Birm. Any money that is left from that may be able to be used to restore the creek. Now, this million dollars, I understand, is going to go on top of that. So what happens if we get in where the manganese stack was blown up years ago? And they get in there and there is no money. What if we run short of money on the south side of the berm? Where we all know the stack blew up, as little kids, that'd be fifty some years ago. And they run into multiple problems there. Is Butte Silver Bow going to have to come up with some money to, to, uh, as it says here, including the expenditure, expenditure of their own funds?
Uh, Mr. Sesso.
No. Uh, be, just to be clear and concise, the answer to the question is no. Uh, anything having to do with the Black Tail Birm or the Butte Reduction Works where the manganese piles were, that's all under the heading of remedy. Uh, all of that work will be done under remedy. If any unknowns that weren't known now when we laid out the work plans under the CD for remedy turn out to be more intensive or more extensive than thought, then the CD is clear that Atlantic Rich Field is, is responsible for the costs of remediating those areas effectively, uh, according to the performance standards that are in the CD. Uh, this, this section has to do with the implementation of this MOU more than having anything to do with the specifics of the, of the, uh, of the, of the remedy under the CD, uh, or any of the restoration projects. The, the, the point being, uh, to whatever extent staff on the coordination effort, as Mr. Holmes has described, coordination, the partnership with the state, going out and, and, and seeking additional funds, uh, trying to get as much, uh, Commissioner Fisher, of that, uh, surplus money from the twenty point five million. Just to be clear, uh, the twenty point five million, uh, is going to be provided by Atlantic Rich Field to the state of Montana. Job one is to perform the remedy on Black Tail Creek from, uh, basically the K O A to the confluence. That's a remedial action that the state's going to be responsible for. We expect that cost to be considerably less than the twenty point five. And then the remainder, the surplus, as it's called in the CD, can be used for other, uh, restoration projects in the corridor uh, and to fulfill commitments that were made to generate the dollars necessary, uh, to do, uh, the Parrot Project. So, A, under legal compliance is, is just means to say that we have to use our own staff resources, if you will, to implement, uh, one through six. Uh, and, and really, uh, we go about this every day. The, the number one is the meat of the matter is the state and, and Butte Silver Bow are going to take actions to try to integrate the restoration activities with the remedial actions going on. That's something we do. Uh, the legal compliance section is just to make sure that, uh, we're understanding our respective responsibilities to perform under this, this MOU. But it, it doesn't extend to taking care of problems that weren't identified, uh, or that come up in the implementation of the remedy under the CD. I, I would defer to, uh, Patrick for his interpretation as well.
Patrick.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fisher, I, I don't have a lot to add to John's explanation. I thought it was spot on. Um, this, the state as part of the consent decree is agreeing to perform that work at Black Tail Creek. We have every expectation that that work will be done for approximately half of the, the twenty point five million in proceeds that are being made available under the settlement and that there will be excess funds available thereafter. And the state put a lot of work and energy into evaluating, uh, what it thought it would take to get the work done. And, uh, has, has, uh, considered appropriate contingencies around that. Um, we do have, you know, an opportunity to manage those resources and that expectation's been set up with the staff team about uh, managing the overall costs associated with that project. So working with the community, I, I, I would expect we will be able, we will be successful in that regard. And certainly, there's nothing in, um, uh, provision A of this MOU or really anything in this MOU that can alter those, uh, terms and agreements that are completed as part of a consent decree if, if in fact it is, uh, finalized by the court.
Thank you, Patrick. Can you go to Commissioner Shaw, and then I'll come back to you, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Patrick. Thanks, John. It's always refreshing to hear all this again because it hasn't been that long ago that we, um, did this hall in February. And at that time, I was really hoping for an MOU. I think everybody was thinking that would be kind of the icing on the cake. You know, if we could have that, I, I think the timing is actually perfect. The best-case scenario is a green light for restoring the creek. And the, the least-case scenario would be be a placeholder. And so, at this time, I would like to concur with communication twenty twenty dash three six oh, uh, and authorize the chief executive to sign the draft MOU between the state and Butte Silver Bow on restoration projects in Silver Bow Creek and then place this.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded by Commissioner Shay to concur with this communication and allow the chief executive to sign it and to place it on file. Is there anything on the question, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Thank you, John Sesso. Um, I guess in closing, John, your experience, experience in local government and state government, is there any concern in you that a new governor in the state of Montana, uh, holding the purse strings to a lot of this money, with Butte being the Democratic stronghold, and a Republican governor may be taken over? Does that seem to have any concern to you at all as a personal question? Thank you.
Mr. Sesso.
Mr. Chairman, I refuse to answer on the grounds that might incriminate my Democratic colleagues. Uh, I, uh, I have, I, uh, I am all in on, uh, trying to assist, uh, my colleague, uh, over many years, uh, uh, of winning that election in the fall. Uh, to, to whatever extent that there is a change, um, you know, again, the, the, this MOU tries to lock in or memorialize a, a deep commitment made by the state now, made by, made by Governor Bullock and, and, and concurred in by Chief Executive Palmer that, you know, we really want to, we want to work together. As I said earlier, Commissioner Fisher, the job one is to get that Black Tail Creek project done, get it done in the most cost-effective way, so there is, we can maximize the number of dollars that are surplus that can be then reinvested in the Silver Bow Creek corridor. That's the design. That's what this MOU tries to make clear, that Butte Silver Bow's expectation and the expectations of our citizens, that, uh, the majority of those funds should be spent in the Silver Bow Creek corridor to complement the remedy, and that's what we'll be working on going forward. So, uh, I know that doesn't answer your question directly, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to go much further, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would make, uh, one other comment, um, and I appreciate the motion by Commissioner Shaw, and, uh, I would defer to, uh, County Attorney Joyce, uh, to, to make sure that this is appropriate. If you look at the last paragraph in the governor's letter, uh, it did refer to a subsequent communication uh, that would, would actually ask for the chief executives, uh, uh, for the council's approval, for the chief executive to sign. I, I would defer to, uh, County Attorney Joyce to make sure that your motion, Commissioner Shaw, i- is appropriate. I, I would love it for you to get it handled, uh, this evening as a response to this communication. But I, I'm, I'm not sure she will, uh, well, I'd like her to, to, to make sure that that's okay before you go. Uh, the easy part is, we, we'll just write another letter tomorrow asking for the chief executive's signature, and it'll be on your, your, uh, your, your agenda next week. But, but Eileen, I, I defer to make sure we, we would do this correctly.
Attorney Joyce.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Sesso, it probably would be, uh, a better motion to, um, request that the actual memorandum of understanding be introduced for approval. Um, because this is, um, on the agenda as a draft. So, um, it would probably make more sense that if there was going to be a second letter, um, I think the purpose of this communication tonight was to allow the council to hear the basis for the MOU and ask any questions prior to authorizing the chief executive to sign it. So, um, since it is listed as a draft MOU and they would like, you know, the opportunity to submit a new letter with the final version, which I assume is basically the same version as the draft, but, um, just simply because it is on the agenda as a draft, that it might be better to just make a motion to, um, request that the final version of the MOU be introduced and recommend that, um, it be approved after, introduced after the final version is introduced.
I can change my motion to, uh, move to concur with communication twenty twenty dash three six oh and to ask the, the new, the, the final MOU be introduced um, and come back to this council for the chief's orders to sign it. And also. And place that on.
Commissioner Shay, do you revise your second?
Yes, I will second that.
And when I place this on file, I mean.
Um, just, just, Commissioner Shaw, yes, you could do that so that, because there is going to be a new communication with the final agreement.
Okay, and place this communication on file.
And second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to concur with communication twenty twenty dash three six zero and ask that the final memorandum of understanding be introduced at the next regular meeting and to place this communication on file. Is that correct, Commissioner Shaw?
That's correct.
Shay? All right. Is there anything else on the question? Uh, on the question, Commissioner Fisher?
I would just like to thank Mr. Holmes and Mr. Sesso for the work they do. And as I stated, I have no objection to the MOU. I just had a few questions and I'd like to have that kind of put out in the air. And thank you, John. Keep up the good work.
Okay, is there anything else on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay, would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk record the vote? Looks like we have eleven yea and zero nay. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Patrick, for, for attending tonight's meeting. Um, next item on the agenda is any public comment on any public matter that's not on the agenda. I don't have anything to read, but I will go to the phone lines. And as of right now, we do have one, so hold on. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Eldon Beal, three fifteen South Dakota.
Hello, Eldon.
How you doing?
Good.
Um, my question is, um, has to do with the resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen.
Okay, Mr. Eldon, just so you know, this isn't an opportunity for questions and answers. They can only ask for comments.
Okay. I mean, would it be a comment if I want to know something about, you know, when this actually took effect and when the, when the time counts?
Eldon, I can't. It's not a time for discussion. It's just your comments on something.
Okay. Well, then I'll have to ask the county attorney if I can get ahold of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any public matter not on tonight's agenda? Again, I don't have anything to read and on the phone line, there's no phone calls. I'm just going to wait for another few seconds. Still no phone calls, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Olson. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good sir.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.